For the spending of $2 trillion on areas of energy efficiency. And mass transit with the goal of 100% carbon-free electricity production by 2035. His climate proposal would create thousands of jobs in solar and wind energy. Tax incentives and new infrastructure are also a major focus. Why am I bringing up the global issue of climate warming? Because both the move to amend and the Green New Deal are complementary. In that they deal with the specific need area of areas of reform, which are likely to be implemented if Biden wins the election. But without a constitutional amendment to eliminate corporate personhood. And rather constitutional rights and money equals speech. All of Biden's new Green New Deal reforms could be overruled by the courts or overwhelmed by big money and dark money. If we continue getting the word out about move to amend and the Green New Deal in our democracy. There is hope for a sustainable future.
Okay, thank you. Next, Amy.
Next, we have Kathy Weiland.
Oh.
Name and address for the record, Kathy.
Yeah, Kathy Weiland, 867 Stone Water Drive in Kent.
Go.
Okay, I want, I want to continue to focus on move to amend corporate control. Climate crisis and the coming election. To express my view on these issues using a recent move to amend.org. Introduction to a televised panel presentation entitled The Immorality of the Climate Crisis and Corporate Rule. Because it fits perfectly with how many of us as citizens in this democracy feel that at the moment of this coming election. The climate crisis and existence threatening crisis to humans and other living entities. While current attention has understandably been on the pandemic and related economic crisis. The impact of human activities implemented through corporations are directly connected to to the increasingly raging fires, hurricanes, and other effects of climate change that will only intensify. Unless we rapidly change direction. Laws and regulations over decades have permitted corporations to treat nature as a resource to extract. Like land, water, trees, plants, minerals, fossil fuels, et cetera. And a venue to dump their waste. Decisions by courts inventing constitutional rights are in large part responsible for this legal plundering and destroying of the natural world. As are the inabilities of we the people to, number one, hold corporate leaders accountable for their pre-knowledge of environmental harms, including climate change. And to protect the health, safety, and welfare of their communities. This is potentially undemocratic, economically unsustainable, and environmentally cataclysmic. It's also profoundly immoral and unethical based on faith and ethical principles. Human rights and rights of nature should be inalienable, not so-called corporate rights. And the right to legally destroy the very environment that supports the existence of human beings and other living entities. Join us as we proclaim system change in what we believe, how we think, and how we act to affirm, protect, and expand the intrinsic worth of people and nature over corporations and profit maximization.
Okay, thank you. Amy further?
Our next guest is Ms. Deborah Barber.
Hello, my name's Deborah Barber. I live at 7531 Diagonal Road in Kent.
There you go.
I'm pleased to be here this evening to represent the Kent League of Women Voters on Democracy Day to speak about making democracy work for everyone. Members of the League of Women Voters of Kent are also members of the Ohio League as well as the League of Women Voters U.S. We are a nonpartisan grassroots organization whose primary purpose is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. Our overall theme for this biennial is make democracy work. One area in which we need to direct our attention is the right of every eligible individual to vote. In Ohio, we know that gerrymandering, which does not promote fair and effective representation to all voters, denies maximum opportunity for public participation. We know that eliminating polling places, having drop boxes that are inaccessible to voters who lack access to transportation, or even requiring postage on ballots, is a burden to many. Perhaps even more important is finally enabling election of the president and vice president by direct popular vote, not by the electoral college. The League of Women Voters U.S. conducted a study of the National Popular Vote Proposal in 2008 and supported, voted to support it as a national position at their convention in 2010. The effect of such a proposal would allow for the direct popular election of the president and vice president without a constitutional amendment. Those in the compact would pledge that their legislature would award all of the state's electoral votes to the presidential ticket that wins the most popular votes nationwide. Regardless of who wins in that particular state. Nationwide as of today, the National Popular Vote Interstate Compact has been adopted by 15 states and the District of Columbia. It is temporarily suspended now in Colorado. What would be more democratic? In Ohio, this was introduced into the 133rd General Assembly as House Bill 70. We should ask why this bill isn't moving through the General Assembly. So I stand with the League of Women Voters in our goal to make democracy work. This means every eligible voter has the access and ability to cast their vote. They are not the victim of intimidation, nor do they become the target of disinformation. This means we create fair congressional districts that effectively represent each voter. This means every vote counts in national elections. And this means that our democracy is not distorted by dark money. Our democracy is truly for the people and by the people. Remember the preamble to the Constitution, we the people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further, Amy?
Yep, our next guest is Fred Pierre.
Fred, name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Fred Pierre. My address is 480 Longmere Drive in Kent, Ohio. And I'll read what I've written here. Does anyone else think it's weird when one man sneezes, the economy staggers? When one man coughs, party politics swoon? There's this saying about putting all your eggs in one basket. Have we invested too much in executive authority? And too much faith in a prestidigitator? An economic miracle isn't a miracle if it's built on the suffering of others. We're caught in the grip of toxic dark money. Money talks and it's constantly louder. Inequality threatens our lives and our nation when a man's birth determines his outcome in life. If you can't afford healthcare, leisure, and shoes, you'll work overtime just to survive. Paying rent isn't ownership. Who made the most during quarantine? The world's wealthiest billionaire owners. The world's first trillionaire wears the Amazon crown. How does people power compare to vast inordinate wealth when propaganda distorts the facts of what's real? You must look in your heart for the seed of compassion. The truth comes out when we care and stop hating what we don't understand. Social media is a wrecking ball dividing our lives, setting uncles against cousins and nieces. Algorithms render our fears back to us on a platter. Choose your poison. Which rabbit hole will you scroll down today? We eat up extremes and reflect back divisions when we all should be working together. Solving big problems requires cooperation. When we help others is when we'll succeed. Save the climate, heal the world, and end hunger? We can do it with formulas for people-powered solutions. We'll develop clean batteries to store renewable power, seed solar loan funds for panel deployment, and harvest free wind from Lake Erie. If the system is broken, then we'll fork it and create a new branch. There's no alternative planet for children to survive on. We can and we must change the world. All we need is more love. We're abandoned by government in a plague, insecure due to lack of compassion. Inclusion revitalizes community connection. Our Kent community is the antidote to isolation. Grow community gardens and paint murals. Close the street and bring music outside. Our city is a model for future success. When we come together, we're free. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Fred. Amy, next?
Next, we have Greg Coleridge.
Name and address for the record, please.
Greg Coleridge, 3016 Somerton Road, Cleveland Heights. Happy Democracy Day to you all in Kent, Ohio. We wouldn't be here this evening if not for the tireless efforts of Kent residents to place the issue of ending big money in politics and corporate rule out and to create this annual public hearing, as well as Kent voters to pass this initiative. So congratulations to one and all. A bunch of tonight's testimony focuses on harms of big money in elections. Harms from money invested by the super rich and corporate entities, harms from the local to the global. Harms to people, places, and the planet. This includes harms from or to authentic self-governance and to our environment here in Ohio. From the legalized bribery, if not actual bribery. First Energy Corporation, if not the polluting corporation itself. It influenced policy away from renewable energy to bailing out their polluting and dangerous fossil fuel nuclear plants. But we must not forget harms caused by corporations that have hijacked constitutional amendments that go beyond merely spending or investing money in elections. That being corporate political First Amendment free speech rights. Rights that have drowned out the political voices of people who aren't corrupting the political process because they aren't investing huge sums of money in elections. So here are a few examples of court-invented corporate constitutional rights that the We the People Amendment addresses beyond corporate political free speech rights. For example, states that have tried to compel the listing of bovine growth hormones or products, on products, or list certain chemicals that they feel are cancer-causing have been rejected by courts as violations of corporate First Amendment rights, not to speak. Public regulatory agencies, which have tried to protect the health, safety, and welfare of workers, consumers, and the environment through inspections of corporate factories and other facilities, have been rejected by courts as violations of corporate Fourth Amendment search and seizure rights. Public regulatory agencies that have passed laws protecting the public from corporate mining and other plundering of the land without compensation have been rejected by courts as violations of corporate Fifth Amendment takings rights. And just as a reminder, the First, Fourth, and Fifth Amendments are parts of the Bill of Rights. Bill of Rights meant to apply exclusively originally to human persons. Corporations weren't mentioned at all in the Constitution. Finally, among others, are efforts by local communities just like Kent, Ohio, which value local businesses. Communities in states that have tried to give preferential treatment to local businesses over, say, chain stores have been overruled by courts as violations of corporate Fourteenth Amendment equal protection rights. Meaning they've been ruled as discriminatory toward favoring small businesses over large mega businesses. You may recall that the Fourteenth Amendment was intended to apply exclusively to freed black slaves, not corporate entities. The same hijacking of democratic self-rule has occurred when multiple past citizen-driven statewide ballot measures have been overturned, mostly in the Midwest, in court stating that only those who work the farms can own the farms, trying to get preferential treatment to family farmers as an effort to repel out-of-state agribusinesses. And again, the courts have overturned those. These examples merely summarize the breadth and depth of the corporate hijacking of authentic self-governance for more than a century. Way beyond mere corporate political First Amendment free speech rights. I invite you to learn more about the full extent of corporate constitutional at the link that I included in my testimony, move to amend.org/corporate-constitutional-rights. And this is why exact enactment of the We the People Amendment, HGR 48, is so important. Which will abolish all never-intended inalienable constitutional rights for corporate entities. I won't repeat the Section 1 of it since Bill mentioned that earlier. So just to conclude, thank you Kent citizens for being part of this growing movement. I invite Kent City Councilpersons, you here assembled, to encourage colleagues in other communities, those that you come into contact with, at the very least, to pass a resolution calling on Congress to enact the We the People Amendment, to join those 680 communities that have already take action, either via a resolution through council or, and also state legislatures, or through a ballot measure. If not, to place the measure directly on the ballot for voter consideration. That's something that also could be suggested to other communities. So thank you very much.
Wind it up, your time's up.
Yep, thank you much.
All right, I thank you. Amy, is there further?
Last guest.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. If you haven't submitted your concerns in email to the court, please do so. So we have an accurate record of tonight, and we will forward those letters to the people that we have listed. At this time, Democracy Day, October 7, 2020, is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move in board of control. Mr. Frere, Mr. Groom, Mr. Roor.
Yep, I think, I think we got everybody here. So if I'm reading this right, we've got short minutes from September 16 that I need a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Mike, you're, you're muted.
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Any discussion, all in favor of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you, guys. Motion, the minutes pass. And now we've got three items that were asked to approve tonight.
A move to approve.
I second that.
Any questions on any of the items? Okay, hearing none, then I would ask for all in favor of the motion, say aye. And opposed, the motion carries, and that would adjourn the minutes. And Garrett, I have to say, I'm pretty sure that my hearing loss dates back to 1986 when I saw Van Halen in the Syracuse Carrier Dome. Hurt so bad, so I, I was a fan, but I think I paid a price.
Yeah, I'm on the same boat with you. I saw him in 86 at, or 85 at the Richfield Coliseum.
Good stuff.
All right, we're going to now go into the conference committee meetings of October the 7, 2020. First on the agenda is to commit into the hall, we're going to talk about diverse hiring policies and practices. Dave, do you want to say anything before I introduce Suzanne?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just introduce this topic a little bit. You may recall, there's been a number of conversations over the last four or five months, obviously, and a lot of social equity, social justice, and diversity issues. And to that end, I mean, we haven't been waiting for those, but those certainly amplified our efforts. I mean, and one of the first things that you all talked about was sort of getting more clarification on hiring practices and what can be done and what can't be done, what the laws allow, what the laws do not allow. So as we dug into that, we've been having meetings with, with a bunch of the different staff folks. And they're with us tonight because I think some of it, particularly the civil service, is not, for people that have not been a part of the civil service system, it's not obvious. And I think it's important to maybe learn a little bit, kind of a, you know, 101 a class in civil service. Don't worry, we're not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I, I do think it's worth understanding kind of the parameters for the systems that we have to work within. And a couple of things I will say too, that it was, there was sort of like some low-hanging fruit right away when, when we started digging into this. Suzanne said, well, a couple of things we absolutely can do right now is make a, come up with a diversity statement, a diversity policy, things that we can include in our, our recruitment packages that make very clear and affirmative statement that, you know, we're anxious to have people apply of all colors, backgrounds, et cetera. So those are two products that we've already adopted. They don't need your approval, but we wanted to just share them with you tonight, so. I think, so Suzanne, I don't know, we talked yesterday. I don't know if you want to kick this off from here, or you want to have Dawn jump in? I, I'm not sure.
So yeah, we thought it would be helpful to begin with an introduction on the civil service process. So Dawn, our civil service coordinator, was gonna take that over.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. I'm just gonna real quick go over the, the civil service process for the classified positions. When we have a vacancy or an expected vacancy and the department head comes to the commission and asks for an eligible list to be created, we advertise our, our posted exam notice. And it would include the job descriptions and any qualifications mandatory. And then we have a employment application that somebody would return before the application deadline. And then along with a written exam, some positions require skills tests, such as a typing test for a clerical position, driving maneuverability, labor position, or physical agility for, like, a police officer. And passing applicants are then ranked on an eligible list based on their test score, after adjusting for extra credit. Now here is something that, that we can't mess with based on the Ohio Revised Code. A passing applicant who has, who has a honorable discharge from the uniform services is eligible for 20% added to their passing grade. If they are a, if they are a member of good standing in the reserves, that would include the Ohio National Guard, they're eligible for 15% extra credit. There are a couple of other pieces of extra credit that the police department and the fire department have added on to their, to their exam notices that we could, we don't have to include that. So for example, in the fire department, an associate degree in fire protection technology would earn somebody 10% extra credit. If you have a firefighter level two, Ohio Fire Certification, you're, you would be eligible for 5% extra credit. Lieutenant Lewis is going to touch a little bit more on the police department's extra credit. So then at that point, we have this eligible list based on these scores. And the hiring manager and HR receives the top 25% of the names off that list or the top 10, whichever is greater. And they can hire off of those. They get the names and the applications. If someone is removed from the list for just cause that they can't hire them, then they're, they're able to get the next, the next name and application down. So they can continually work off of the top 25%. And then that list is good for a year if there's any more vacancies that come up in that same position. So along with talking about removing those pieces of extra credit, we had also talked about possibly doing some sort of pre-test information session training type thing for anyone that would maybe want to apply and getting some sort of background on the test process, it might help. That's about all I have.
Okay, so then I'll jump into some of the citywide initiatives that we'd like to try to put into effect that could affect both civil service and non-civil service hiring. Are things like Dave mentioned, we did create a new diversity statement and policy, which was in your packets. We've begun looking at increasing our current staff training to encourage inclusion. We're updating our recruitment documents and city branding to better reflect our commitment to diversity. We're looking to expand our recruitment further to places that have higher numbers of BIPOC students and professionals, which would include advertising on niche job boards. We're gonna, we already use pretty diversified hire teams. And we do several sets of interviews when we hire someone, but we're going to continue to diversify those higher teams. And continue with increased assessments and structured interviews that would have, that would thoroughly evaluate candidates. And then specific to non-civil service hiring, we can work on practicing blind screening where we can't do that with civil service since the lists are, are public record. And we're going to continue to update our talent review toolkit to help recognize potential and mitigate unconscious bias. So Lieutenant Lewis, who is on his way to getting onto the meeting, but is not here yet, is going to explain some of the possible changes that the city is able to legally make to our civil service process. Especially involving the safety forces, which could encourage more applicants to apply. And I can kind of look over my notes and kind of start talking about some of those. As Dawn had alluded to, some of the things for safety specifically that we're going to look at are getting rid of some of the extra credit, which would encourage more people to apply. And it would open up the, the pool of applicants. And those would be things like extra credit for degrees, extra credit for OPADA certificates. And we are going to try to look at offering, possibly, we need to look at what some other cities, it, it, there would be a lot of logistics to figure out, but how we could possibly pay for schooling for police officers before they go into their OPADA program. So we would hire them and then put them through to get their OPADA certificate.
Yeah, if I could, if I could jump in, I will say, I think most of you have been getting Nick's weekly updates as the chief. And I think those are terrific. And, and one of the thing, I think, things I think you'll be seeing in there if you haven't already is kind of his interest in his, his desire to really sharpen this particular aspect of their hiring and their, sort of their people portfolio. And Nick's been great talking to Suzanne already, kind of said, calling other communities and kind of taking a look at who seems to be doing a little better than others as far as getting the pool of applicants. Because remember, in our case, we're not getting the applicants even on the list. So it's not per se that we're overlooking someone of color or different nationality. We're simply not getting them testing and hitting that top 10, 25%, whichever comes first. So trying to figure out why that is, maybe in terms of is there something structurally in there? I don't know if Mike's on yet, but Mike has done a great job, really, he, he lives and breathes this stuff. So it's good that you, you can hear this from him. But I'll also say, I think Nick has some good ideas that I hope at some point in the course of this, he'll, he'll mention in there in terms of what he's seen some other communities doing. And, you know, I think you'll get a, a good flavor for the sincerity of the commitment, so.
Lieutenant Lewis is on, so.
I apologize for being a few minutes late. I wish I could have got Dawn and Suzanne's presentation, but I'm sure that they did a very good job explaining everything. So I will be happy to pick up. I'm going to speak to what I believe Dawn had initially covered, and that is how changes to the civil service exam. to the civil service exam could greatly impact our recruiting and our hiring. So it's been an obstacle for years because of the bonus points that have been awarded to candidates have created some disparity for people. But that's something that we need to, to take a look at. We certainly want a balance of a well-educated community and a well-educated police force. So I think it's important to look at why some of these things were put into place to begin with, and where some of this bonus points and credit came from. Obviously, military is required by state law. So that's going to remain. But the bonus points for education, while it's served us well to have a very well-educated and a well-trained police department, that's something that we really pride ourselves in, but we understand that that can create some disparity and separation of candidates on the list. We also want to point out, we're definitely seeking people who have demonstrated more than just a fleeting commitment to this profession. So because of that, we have in the past given bonus credit to people who have taken the initiative, who have achieved higher education or have put themselves through the OPADA Police Academy, and they come to us with that training and certification. And we think that that demonstrates, like I said, a pretty serious commitment to this profession. But we also recognize and understand that that can be a detriment to some candidates who maybe can't afford that training, or just haven't necessarily looked at that already and aren't willing to make that investment. To further point that out, some of the issues that we have seen with the extra credit bonus points that have been awarded, the extra credit has been a hindrance to all people in the past, not just minorities. So we did have a couple instances of this just recently in the past couple of years. We conducted a background investigation last year on one candidate whose raw score was a 70%. Now, that's the minimum passing score, but he was a very attractive candidate, and that 70% raw score equaled someone who scored 21 positions ahead of him. It was a comparison of 53rd on the list to number 32 on the list. That's pretty significant. Ultimately, we ended up not hiring either candidate. But again, they had the same raw score and they were 21 positions apart when all was said and done on that eligibility list. So that's a concern. There was another officer whom we did hire who placed 47th on our eligibility list. His raw score was better than two people who had placed in the top 10 who we did not hire. So again, we are seeing some evidence that those bonus points and extra credit, they were a hindrance to some people, especially with that candidate who, there was a 39-place difference between 47th on the list and number eight on the list. Also, some issues that we've had in the past have been testing and some of the testing companies that we use. So in 2017, we had a very, very difficult entry exam, and we ended up losing approximately one-third of our applicants who tested for the position of police officer. We learned that eight of the people who failed the test were already police officers elsewhere in other jurisdictions. So when we had eight people who had already proven and demonstrated that they could do this job elsewhere, they couldn't even pass our initial entrance exam. That was another thing that we corrected, this most recent test in 2019. Some other possibilities that we have talked about to try and improve recruiting and hiring is the possibility of, if we can afford it, is helping send somebody through the police academy. That can be a difficult expense. And I won't say that that's something we can commit to at this point, but if we get a good enough candidate, I think that that is something that Chief Shear will take a look at, and I'll let him discuss that further. I also want to point out that departments all across America are struggling with equal representation, and this is certainly not an issue that is unique to the city of Kent. But I also want to point out that if people honestly expect minorities to want to be police officers, then they need to stop vilifying this profession. So I, that's something that I certainly want everybody to, to understand and to focus on. It's counterproductive. And unfortunately, we are seeing a lot of negative talk about the profession right now. And it kind of makes you wonder who would want to get into this line of work. And it can be difficult to try and convince somebody from a minority neighborhood to try and join the police department in this current culture. I've read a number of articles on this and studied it a little bit. But in just a few of the articles that I've read, it mentioned that black police officers face a two-front battle right now. So they're, they're dealing with extra challenges. Another, another article said, "I feel torn between my race and my badge," which certainly be difficult. And the third one said, "A lot of people," um, excuse me, said, "black police officers are navigating two turbulent worlds right now." They are looked at differently from the people who live within their communities. And an issue that we're seeing all across policing in America is a lot of people, regardless of race, are leaving policing right now. We've seen a lot of retirements almost at a record rate, especially with the New York Police Department just this year, the number of police officers who have filed for retirement or just outright resigned from the profession, based on what we're experiencing right now as this culture is very concerning. So I think that we should pose the question really to anyone, and that would be, would anyone you know feel uncomfortable telling you that they are considering joining the police department? And if the answer is yes, then I think you need to ask yourself why. So I think that we need everyone's help, everyone in the public, everyone in our community to encourage people to want to join the police department and to go into this very noble profession. Despite what we're seeing, you know, play out in some communities nationwide, we have outstanding police department here in the city of Kent that I think anybody should be proud to be a part of.
Heidi, you have a question?
I do. So I'm hearing a lot about bonus points, but I'm not hearing anything about like bonus point, points for being a member of a minority in hiring preferences.
That's not something that we could do.
Now illegal now, according to, you know, higher law? Or is it just something that we don't think is a good practice?
I don't believe that that's something that we could do at all. Suzanne, Dawn, I will turn that over to you.
No, I don't believe that we could. I mean, everything, I mean, besides from the military credit, which comes from the state, is based on the actual qualifications of the position generally for extra credit.
I, I would go one step further. Go ahead, Hope.
I would, I agree with Suzanne. We cannot give extra credit for minorities, women, things like that. But what we can do, as Suzanne said, is we can encourage people of different races, the sex, religion, ethnicities, to apply with us.
So, so can I, can I learn the reasons why, like maybe even off this, out of this meeting? I'd really like to see what statutes limit that.
Oh, I guess that's a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, where are we? John, you have a question?
Yeah, Robin, you have one? Go ahead.
No, John, you go first. I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna turn this into a question. It seems to me like any type of a, a bonus score would be a negative approach to police officers, and, and it would lower the bar and give us a, a less of a police officer when it's all over with. And maybe, do you agree that maybe we should work harder on our marketing plan to find people, or our marketing plan to find officers, do more than what we're doing already, and find new approaches that encompass more, you know, different diversification of people instead of, you know, giving bonus points so that we get someone that might not be anywhere near as good as some of the people we're looking at?
So I can take that one. So like Mr. Reller mentioned, kind of this recruiting thing and looking into what other departments who have been more successful than we are in terms of diversity. I've had a lot of conversations and a lot of done some research into what other, other of these departments are doing. I absolutely think that we can do some things differently when it comes to recruiting. Quite, quite frankly, I, I agree that the bonus points are in, in getting rid of some of those things are a good thing. Not only does it just sound reasonable, there's good sound research behind it. There is research to indicate first and foremost that some of the issues we're seeing in policing are not impacted by a college education, for instance. There, there's no, there's no evidence to indicate that that makes you a better police officer. So why are we giving extra credit for something when there's no evidentiary value to that practice? So that's some of the stuff we've talked about internally, but certainly modeling ourselves after some departments that do a little bit better job, have done a little bit better job with diversity in terms of recruiting is, is, is the plan going forward.
You know.
Kilo, I can get you a kilo or my sniper.
Oh.
Go ahead, John.
I don't want to hire somebody, you know, to, to do a job because they're white, or hire them because they're black, or hire them because they're a woman. I would like to hire a person because they're the best qualified to do the job, and I'm sure we all, we all feel that way.
I, I agree with that. One of the things we've spoke about a lot is, as a police department, integrity is everything. And, and maintaining that strong background investigation process and not lowering our standards is very important to us. That being said, there are plenty of minority candidates out there that, that we may not have tapped into yet that meet those standards. And that's where we need to find a way to incorporate that more through recruiting. That way we can maintain those high standards. And quite frankly, some of these things that we're giving extra credit for are hurting candidates who may have had less access to things like education. And, and I don't know that any of us are going to dispute the fact that, that there's, that there, there is an education disparity in this country. So rewarding something that has no evidentiary value in, in our profession that is having a, a negative impact on, on certain races i- is, is counterproductive.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah. I, I don't think ultimately that if, and I'll kind of direct this toward both Hope and Suzanne for clarification, but I think there's a percentage that you choose from in the top echelon of the test that you could actually end up applying the issue of diversity to. You have 10 candidates in the top, you have the, the top 10% or 10 candidates, whatever, that have passed the test and now are available, available to be chosen. I may, one of the candidates, maybe the number nine or seventh candidate could be a woman, a, a black candidate, or someone else that you look at and feel that that type of diversity would be very helpful to your police department. And therefore you look at that aspect and you say, based on that, I can, I'm going to choose this candidate. I don't think that that's discriminatory. I think it falls within the purview, the ability to hire. And help me with that, ladies, to see if in fact that is a correct analysis of the situation. That it doesn't preclude our ability to be able to look out after the testing of the top candidates, which then would allow us to make a, a choice, which actually is in some ways a discriminating choice about trying to adjust our workforce to be more diverse. It's just not adding points to candidates as a minority or as a, a college graduate or whatever, which by the way, narrowing the gap on that might be sufficient. I don't really know why a college candidate would need the additional points anyway. They're supposed to be educated. They probably ought to be pretty good at taking the test. And so that seems to be replicating a situation. But I would look for some assistance here from Suzanne and, and Hope on whether or not my reading of that is accurate.
Hope, do you want to weigh in on that?
I do. If, if we are permitted to pick from the top 10 candidates that have been certified, Robin, you are absolutely right. We can, we can look at one through 10, and if number nine is a woman and she's just as good as anyone else, you're absolutely right. We can hire her.
Right.
I mean, I may be wrong. Anecdotally, this is Dave, Robin. Anecdotally, from conversations I've had with department heads, they do that already. They're trying, when they see, they, that they think could be, you know, of, that would help round out the, you know, the diversity on staff, they will go after that candidate specifically in that, off that list.
That's what I thought.
You want to weigh in on? Suzanne, you want to weigh in on? Okay. Heidi, you got another question?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I had in mind. You know, kind of this, all else being equal, we have a preference and we can, we can, you know, kind of back that up with, you know, saying we have this preference, all else being equal. We're not. I mean, there is the giving of the points or the not giving of the points, but still, can we not, you know, have some kind of preference in hiring, just like we have a preference in, you know, when we go to bid on something, we're supposed to look at minority-owned businesses first, or women-owned businesses, you know, all else being equal. That seems to me like maybe that kind of a statement would be made in addition to, gee, we would really like to see more diversity on staff, set up with an assertion.
Okay, Roger, you're next, and John, you're next. Roger.
Yeah, but just to jump in on this conversation, and Jack can kind of allude to this a little bit too, I'm sure. You know, when we were hiring for the schools, one of the things that I, I don't want to go back to what Hope says, because I think it's appropriate, and I, maybe Nick, you know, you or I could jump in too, to see if this is appropriate. But we always had a strategy, and as long as we were consistent with the strategy and we, and when it, when it, we got down to making a decision, we were consistent in how we did it, then we were pretty safe. So for instance, we wanted to try to get 25% of the, the, the teaching staff at the high school be former graduates of the high school. We thought they brought the, you know, some culture that could stay at the high school. We wanted 25% of the, the faculty to be from Northeastern Ohio or from, you know, the, the, you know, the, the area that is of our state. We wanted another 25% to be from the greater parts of the state, and then we wanted 25% out there from the rest of the country. But there was no guarantee that we would get candidates that would fit that. That was just kind of like our, our model out there. So I, you know, to me, if we, if we, getting back to what John had to say, if we had two great candidates and they were the top two, then we would look at, what is it that we, we are, you know, what is the need of the school? Would, would the school be served in, by hiring the, the local stu-, you know, a former graduate, or would the, would the school be served by hiring someone else? And in the end, what usually happened is, is that we never, the top one never fit a, a general need that we had, we always went with the best candidate. And it, it seemed to work well. We tended to, you know, there were some times where the best candidate was, was someone who we feel that, you know, who scored the highest. So could that not be used in the, in the police? You know, either Nick or Mike could, you know, if we have three, three candidates that are exactly equal, could you not make some assessment as to what the, what could help the overall organization? I guess that's what I'm driving at.
So, so absolutely. That's something, and, and quite frankly, and Mike can speak to this as well, is the one who does the background investigations. It is very, very rare we have two people come out so close together that it's, it makes it that difficult of a decision. It has happened, and, and I'm sure you've been in this position when that does happen. It's, it's extremely difficult. It's, it's extremely difficult to make that decision. Quite honestly, when it comes, if, if we're speaking specifically about more of a minority hiring standpoint, at least in my time in this position, which you all know is not, not very long. We haven't had that. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far with a minority candidate. So that's the unfortunate reality of it. Part of the problem we're seeing and what we're really hoping to see, if, if we do some of these adjustments on the extra credit, is we're, we're seeing a big problem having people, having minorities score in that top 25% to even be able to consider. So, so that's really been a big part of it. So, so our, our big hope is, and I understand, and I put out the numbers and the percentages earlier this year to all of you, and I don't remember them all off the top of my head right now, but there was something like about 10 to 12% African American population on our, that took our, our last test. I, I think we had one score in the top 25%. So that kind of makes it very difficult when we're looking at these things. That being said, I think if you look at that list and you look at the extra credit points that were awarded based on the current civil service law in the city, you would find more minorities in that top 25% if we didn't have the extra credit setup we have. Again, going back to some of the things Mr. Kuhar said, I'm not saying that that's an end all be all, absolute fix to everything, but it is a great starting point in coupling that with better recruiting or more diverse recruiting, I, I think will, will get us in a better place.
Hey, John, you had your hand up? Yeah, and I, I think I'll just address this one to Mike just for the heck of it. But I, I think, and I might be mistaken in what I'm understanding, I don't believe that you are faced with a plethora of qualified, high ranking people that qualify for the test. Am I right or wrong?
We have a lot of qualified applicants. If you're speaking about applicants overall, are you speaking to minority applicants?
Overall.
Overall, we have a lot of qualified applicants who are black. So going to the numbers that Chief Shear was, I think, speaking to, we had 102 total applicants in 2019. And of those applicants, 10 were black. That's, that's almost 10% and that almost accurately reflects our census data from, I think the most recent one I have says that 9.1% of our city is black. So that kind of mirrors statistics for applicants.
Okay, see, I was, I misunderstood because I thought from what I was hearing that people were running out of the police department and not trying to run into it.
Well.
So you do have a good number of people that are wanting to be police.
Well, you make a good point, sir. That was the 2019 test. And I think that we all can say that this has been a very challenging year for police officers. And what I was speaking to, the mass exodus has occurred in 2020. It's been a difficult year with coronavirus and with all the racial tensions that are going on. And the New York Police Department released statistics saying from May 25th till September 10th of this year, they had 1,473 people file their paperwork for retirement. In that exact same window in 2019, they had 496. That's about a three times increase of people who have left the New York Police Department. That's 2020. It's been a very challenging year. So although we had 102 applicants on our last test, due to a lot of recruiting, I don't know how many people we'll get next time.
Well, that's good information I have. And, you know, my advice would be is to, to set an example as Kent Police does and make sure it's a good one, not a bad one. And I think things will improve.
I agree. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump into, I want to mention something because it, it may not be evident just from hearing the conversation tonight. I know Nick talks a lot about it. We all, I think, nod our heads and we say, do more recruitment, do more strategic recruitment. But I, I do want, I think we have to point out, everybody that knows Mike Lewis here, Lieutenant Lewis, knows he's a fantastic ambassador for the department. He works his tail off trying to get quality applicants of all colors, but he works specifically in our region very heavily at Kent State, African American students. It is not that it is being ignored. What I think Nick would say is we're going to have to broaden our window. I mean, Mike's been very focused in our immediate area and for good reason because he talks a lot about the fact that our best officers, and this is true probably of every city employee, our best city employees are people that are homegrown. I mean, they're people that care about their community. They, they live here, they, maybe they grew up here. I'm not saying that you have to have those things, but if you have those things, it can make for a really special hire. And so Mike obviously puts a lot of effort in the immediate vicinity, people that know Kent. I mean, he, he talks about that. It's hard to be somewhere and trying to recruit somebody who really doesn't even know anything about Kent. Because in his opinion, he's like, well, shouldn't they have done a little homework, right? I mean, it's tough and it, it's not just the police department, please. I think you know that it's true in all of our, all our, our departments and Northeast Ohio is, I, I think it's a fairly common problem even in the private sector too. So I didn't want it to go without being said, Mike does a great job. We're just trying to do even more.
Thank you.
I would echo that as well.
Nick, are you finished?
I, I was just going to echo what Mr. Reller said and say, you know, to tie this back to some of the stuff we talked about earlier this year, the youth engagement and developing a police explorers program. These are all things that we're, we're undertaking to try to create better relations within all of our community, but, but also the, you know, the minority community within Kent to grow relationships with people that we can, like Mr. Reller said, have this, this homegrown pool of people out there to draw from. And that, again, that's the, 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 the down the road aspect of all this. I think we all agree that we can do more now, but I, I do want to acknowledge that, that Mike does a great job and that's kind of the, the vision for the future that, that I have for the department.
Chief, if I might, Mayor?
Go ahead. Dennis, Heidi?
Okay.
Go ahead, Robin.
Robin, go.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Uh, Chief, do you think that an aspect of that then would be through that community outreach, the neighborhood policing program with the focus on young people? If it's playing ball or if it, how, how do we connect young people down here at earlier age with the police department so that they are seen as facilitators and uplifters in life? And being able to create the kind of relationships and esteem that might be needed to kind of help deal with the issue of right now where we're at, not just with young black children, but young children who are challenged from a socioeconomic condition, which to me is probably the bigger problem, even from the race issue. To me, more socioeconomic than it is actually race. But maybe we start looking at trying to construct something that is unique and different from that standpoint through the community. And maybe start building on that.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. And, and I agree that this is, is probably more so from what we've seen as socioeconomic issue. So to speak to that a little bit, we, in, in the last several months, I've designated now, I have two community relations officers on every shift. The job of the day shift community relations officers right now is, is to work with the schools. So that's really been largely programmatic, not just, hey, go in schools and talk to people. Our, our community relations officers have had meetings with the school administrators, both from the, I'm sorry, the superintendent's level, also down through the principals of the schools. And there's now signup sheets in the elementary schools for the teachers to sign up, to have cops come and assist them in classes, to get them in front of young kids on a regular basis. That, that's, that's been a nice thing that we, we've had to be, been able to partner with. We also did a partnership this summer and got in front of the Kent Parks and Recs programs with their, their life and leadership block where we were able to work with kids doing that with the same community relations officers. Above and beyond that, we, we had a lot of hopes and dreams really that COVID has sort of taken away from us. So we had a, we had started working with the Parks and Recs Board to partner with the, the, the sports programs. We were going to partner with football in particular. And, and we were going to have our afternoon shift community relations officers attending practices and interacting with the kids there. And then the day shift community relations officers on the weekends, on the sidelines of the football games with the kids, just interacting. I, I think that, what I like to say is, I, I think that in large part right now, when a police officer shows up at events like that, it's kind of like, hey, what, what are the cops doing here? I don't want that to be the reaction. I want the cops to show up at those events and people to say, hey, that's Officer so and so, and he's here to, you know, come give the kids a high five. You know, I, I want them to know us and I want them to know why we're there. And I want it to be a comforting feeling when they see us. So like I said, that, that's kind of all been pushed back a little bit because of COVID. And that's just the unfortunate reality of the times we live in in 2020. But there are a lot of thoughts going forward for how we're going to do those things.
Is there further, Robin?
No, thank you.
Heidi, you had your hand up, and John Kuhar?
I do. And I'll make a statement first and I'll try to put it into question. I really like what Suzanne, I think it's Suzanne's authorship. Maybe it was a more of a group effort of the diversity and inclusion policy. Really, really nicely done. After listening to Roger, I'm wondering if we couldn't maybe pull something out of that that could be more of a strategic statement, strategic goal. Because it sounded like the school system had stuff like that. And maybe that could be what we could put out to the community. Maybe council could do it, maybe the staff could do it. I'm not sure, but something like, in the last paragraph, it says the city of Kent is committed to fostering a workforce that's just as diverse as our community. That and, you know, by, we'd want 10% of our workforce to be racial minorities by 2025 or, you know, and then here's how we're going to, you know, do that. It might, it might just really help us and help the community know how serious we are by making it a part of our strategic plan, not kind of putting it out as a open a wish. And I think that we're already doing the actions. Be, I guess it's part of me just wants the public to know this and wants us to all agree that this is something that we're working toward and, you know, create as a, as a high value. So that's, that's my, that's my question. I don't know if it's answerable right now, but a strategic goal could be that. And Dave probably has a.
Roger, you want to weigh in on that?
Well, yeah, I think, I think when you start writing things down like that, it locks you in a little bit. I think that when you, the, our, our approach, and Heidi, you, you're exactly right. Our approach at our building, in our particular school system, we had a strategic goal to try to have a diverse, uh, uh, number, diversity amongst our staff, our teachers. And that diversity was a variety of things. We wanted a balance, we wanted a gender balance. We wanted to have as best we could find, we wanted a, a racial balance. And I, I appreciate what Mike had to say because we use those exact numbers saying, gee, if we have about 10% of our community is black, then we should try to have 10% of our faculty. You can say that all you want and it, we, we would go, we went a lot further than Kent State. We were all over the state of Ohio trying to recruit teachers to come to Kent City Schools. And, and many of them were, were African Americans who we couldn't even, we couldn't touch because they were going to larger school systems in larger communities that were making a heck of a lot more money because they were, they were going into communities they were more, they felt more comfortable with because they were predominantly black. I'll just say it that way. So what would happen is, is that we didn't want to lock ourselves in, but I, I would agree that being strategic and making a, a very broad strategic approach is the way to go. And that's what we did. I think people knew what we were doing, that we were trying to balance our, our staff the best we could and, and leave it at that. I think if you lock yourself down, I think you, you open yourself up to maybe not hiring someone who would be absolutely terrific because you're trying to, you know, that would be my, my thought on.
Right, Dave, you had your hand up. Then I'll get to you, John.
Yeah, if I can, I just want to say, we agree with all that and, and you already have that in your strategic documents that we send you every year. You have a goals and objective, I send you the strategic packet has like what council's worked on, what you've achieved, your goals, your objectives. There's one that specifically city council goals and objectives for 2020. And that's been produced for the last 10 years probably. And most of the contents doesn't really change. And there's a whole section devoted to diversity. Those affirmative statements that you're talking are in there. Now, we can sharpen them more, we want to throw a number, but we specifically already say something to the effect, we want to have a diverse community that celebrates its, you know, diversity. And I can't remember the exact narrative right now. I have no, I think, so I think the good news is you've kind of done that. That came right out of the bicentennial plan and that's carried through. We've carried that piece through. It's one of the top sections of the, of the goals and objectives, objectives that you all have. Track each year. What I will say is it, it may be a good time to add a few more specifics to that category based on the kind of comments that you guys are making.
Hey, John?
Mayor?
John?
Mayor?
John Kuhar? Okay. Mike, you know, we're always looking down the road as a city for, it seems like everything, we're 50 years out. I wanted to ask you, do we have a DARE program in the police now?
No, sir. It, it's been quite a while. We had the DARE program many, many years ago, and then we transferred it into something that was called the STAR program. Similar, just a different acronym. But we've been without a program like that for quite a while.
Do you think it'd be a good idea to, to have one and maybe 10 years from now to pay off?
Hopefully less than 10 years from now. So I know when Chief Shear took over his, his office, youth engagement is really a big priority of his. And that's where the community engagement officers come in. So we have a school resource officer and, you know, honestly, we were late to that party. But we've had that, we've had that position for about six or seven years now and it's served us very well. But that's only in the high school and a little bit in the middle school. All the other schools that we have, they're visited by the officers, officers who are on day shift patrol. And it is absolutely one of their shift requirements to get into those schools and engage with the students and be involved. So we would like to see that continue, but we're, we're going to have some more, I guess, structured programs going forward. I think Chief Shear could probably speak better to that.
Yeah, I'm looking down this notebook. Okay, I, I guess I got it from one of my kids 100 years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while.
But it's got a big star on it and it said junior deputy, you know?
Yeah.
And I, and it was, I, I can remember back then and it was a good thing for, for all the kids. And there was half a dozen of them that, that hung out. One of them ended up being a US Marshal, another one is so police. So, so of the five kids, three of them chose law enforcement, which was, which was pretty good.
Yeah, and, and that's an excellent point. I think, you know, we're focusing a lot on what our applicant pool looks like. And, you know, I read a, I read a terrific line, it's not mine, but instead of focusing on the pool, you have to focus on what is in the pipeline. Because if it's not in the pipeline, it doesn't end up in the pool. So we need to create ways where we can get youth engagement, where we can teach children that, you know, being a police officer, again, is a very noble profession, is something I'm proud to be a part of. And there's a number of positions working within the city of Kent that I think people don't really fully understand. It's a great city to work for, a lot of, you know, good pay, benefits. You, you should be proud to work for your city. And we hope to, we hope to raise a lot of kids within our community that want to stay in our community and work for the city.
So to more specifically answer that, yeah, DARE is, is something that I, I have already begun looking at a little bit.
Thank you, gentlemen. Robin?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I don't know, I, I kind of, I thought I brought this up. I, I don't know. I, I kind of, I thought I brought this up. Because the subject was broached, I think by Heidi. Maybe when we first start talking about this and boy, I, I really support her vision and her heart on that. But the, the bottom line, I, I think, and I'd said this before is once you start honing things and getting down to numbers, you're creating a problem on a couple of fronts. One of them is first off, if we're trying to say 10% of the population, 10% of the workforce, you're going to have a lot of people in the minority community who will look at that and then say, well, you've got 2% of the population, 2% of your workforce, which is minority. And isn't that objective of yours at 9% or whatever lacks not being met? When you're pushing and doing all the things you can do, there's no question that we have to do a better job. But let me tell you something, once you start getting into numbers, you're going to get pushed back in two directions. One of them is that there are going to be people who probably will file a complaint that you are requiring quotas. That's an issue which is being debated almost all the time in court. Whether or not that's even acceptable. That can be one of the problems. The other one is you're going to create perhaps unrealistic, unrealistic expectations in the community about your ability to hire and get to those certain numbers. The things that you're trying to do and establish, Heidi, you've pushed and you've done an excellent job of doing it. Which is you're saying, we have to do a better job. We can do a better job. And we should be trying to endeavor to do a better job. We're doing that now. And we have to continue to do the outreach Suzanne, Hope, everybody, we're working toward that end. We just have to continue to work to try to ensure that we're creating the facility to be able to do the best job that we can do. The community has to take on some of the burden as well. The minority community, the other people who believe that it's important to increase the numbers that we want to be considered to meet that kind of diverse community mantra is something that we now are engaged in. And hopefully we'll continue to work toward and endeavoring to achieve. So I'm very happy with where we're at. We're working at it. Our police department is on it. Our, our administrators are on it. We're going to, we're going to do the best job that we can do. We're not going to be perfect. We can't be. But we can endeavor to be. And so hopefully that's something now that we'll continue to strive to do better at. And let's continue on that road.
Okay, is there anybody else? Mr. Farrar, you hadn't spoke.
Well, I, I first say that I think Robin was spot on on his comments about that. And I, I think the overriding issue is, is that it's, it's, it's a ignorance or unawareness of the general population of what we're trying to do. And when I say we, I mean the chief and the lieutenant and the rest of the police department. You know, they're doing everything that everybody wants them to do. It's just they don't know that. And, and, and it's our job to, when, when that discussion comes up and the accusation comes up that they're not being diverse is to be able to say, look, we're, we're, we're trying really hard to, to meet that criteria. We have a, we have a high standard. But, you know, and, and we're going to hire the best people and, and we've got some wiggle room to, to account for race and minorities. And when those clients or when those applicants are available, we're going to, we're going to hire them. But I think the lieutenant made the best comment of all is you can't go running around vilifying the police and then turn around and say, why don't we have any police or any black or women police on our force? So you have to set the tone that, that the police need to be respected, that they are, you know, they're, they're, they're just like you and I. They go to work every day and they want to do the best possible job and they, and they protect all of our freedoms. But you have so many people out there just vilifying them. And it's counterproductive to their mission of, of, of hiring quality people. So Lieutenant, I, I commend you for bringing that fact up and stating the obvious. Sometimes it's not stated enough. So I, I would turn it back to council and and anybody else that works in the city to, to defend what we're doing and, and to educate people what we're doing and how we're doing it. Because clearly they are, and I say, keep up the good work.
Sure.
Is anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I guess one, will you hear anything from the fire department's point of view? I know we, we could talk about the police department, but would you like to hear anything from, from the fire department? Some of our, some of our issues as well?
Okay.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I empathize with Nick and, and Mike. I know that the police departments in general throughout the country had image problems. Fire departments have not, I'm not saying it's bragging. This is part of departments in general and particularly our department has, does have a pretty good, pretty good image. However, we still have those types of challenges to diversify our, our force to not only with minorities, but to bring in females, particularly EMS. A lot of females patients tend to respond much better to female paramedics. So that makes a big difference. So you know, we have active recruitment going out, actually social media, going out, making phone calls, emails. We used to set up posters at Accrion U and different fires programs. And then we also have our, our passive recruitment that we've been doing, community engagement, getting out into the schools from grade school all the way up to high school and including college. And one of the things that we, we found is that the earlier we can start. For example, it's a great idea of getting explorer program in and, and starting locally. Maybe even getting resonance bonus points on the civil service test instead of college giving getting extra credits. So just things like that, I think overall can help us. You know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing for us to come up with. And, you know, I think all those things together, we, we still have some difficulties. We, you know, we were fortunate, very fortunate to hire a great guy and our latest recruit, Jordan. By the way, that, he is actually our third overall African American in the eighties. We had two part-time African Americans when I got hired. But, but George's our first full-time. So the challenges exist, not only for the minorities, but for, to get quality and, and get females to, to be interested again in the fire service. And there's a big push in the eighties and nineties nationwide. I just don't see that right now. So. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chief Dosko. Anybody else? Seeing none, you know, this was very informational and we received the staff's report. I think we're doing what we can. I think we always could do better. But I think really council has to be aware of what our departments are doing because I don't think fully we are. We get the information and sometimes we read it, sometimes we don't. But, you know, I think our departments are trying the hardest they can to meet the challenges of today. So if there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the committee in the hall. And we're going to go into health and public safety. Mr. Amrane?
Yes, we have one topic and that's the prohibition of mass gatherings. Hope?
Thank you. As you know, after the students started coming back to campus, the COVID incidents started rising in Kent. And actually in the, on the administrative level, we had had a lot of lively conversations about the Ohio Department of Health's directive that no more than 10 people could gather at one time. In an effort, after I spoke to Joan and, and the chief and, and Dave, I decided to look at what Miami University in Oxford, or I, I'm sorry, what Oxford, Ohio did because of Miami University. What they did was I think buckled up the Ohio Department of Health's mandate a lot better. And they have prohibited, and, and this is basically from Oxford. And they prohibit mass gatherings of more than 10 people who are non-household members. And if, if the, if a party or a gathering, if, 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 I, I put the enforcement authority in the health department. So if the health department rolls up on a gathering, they can choose to civilly cite the person who's giving the party, anyone who's attending, or someone who chooses to maintain a party. Which I think the maintain part is important because let's say if we have a a sorority or a fraternity or a particular off-campus house that is continually violating the mass gathering rule. Maybe we can go to whoever owns the property and say, you know what? Now this is your problem. There are exceptions to it, which includes church, First Amendment gatherings, media, restaurants, warehouses, schools and things like that. But this is just our effort to try to curb both the outbreak of any COVID on campus and in our community. And to give the health department a, a citation, a, a civil citation type of penalty to get out there. And it would be a $500 civil fine. And if you guys don't have any questions right now, I think that the, the ordinance is pretty straightforward. But I don't know if Joan, are you here? Yes, I see Joan. It maybe if she wants to add anything about the, the things that she's run into as she's gone around and canvassed the community and she's, you know, trying to educate the community and particularly the college students.
Joan, unmute yourself.
Thank, thank you. I was doing that. So, you know, and a couple of instances that I can share is that when I'm out doing compliance rounds, I'll often walk down some side streets and see parties going on. And really in the past had no way to enforce them, you know, to ask them to either break up or socially distant. We recently, from a party where actually a community member stopped, took a picture and took the time to send it into the department. Within 10, well, actually with less than 10 days, within seven days, two people that lived at that address were positive for COVID. So that is one of the clearest links I have that, you know, we know that these gatherings happen and that they do perpetuate the spread of COVID-19. There are multiple as well, but that one just happened fairly recently. So being able to have some authority to have some enforcement might help in terms of trying to prevent spread.
John?
You know, it, it almost appears like, you know, and, and I guess it doesn't almost appears. It, it is a, a rule, it's a targeted ordinance, targeted at the college students, period. And it's like back in the sixties when, you know, they had ordinances that only applied to people with ponytails. And, you know, even I, it's, it's too bad, but you know, it just almost looks like you're regulating stupidity. And you can't help it if people are stupid and don't know how to take care of theirselves. But I just, just have a question with, you know, should we be regulating that?
You know, you know, Mr. Kuhar, it, we are not targeting the students. The students coming back to campus was the impetus for this. If, if, if Joan gets a complaint that there's someone having a large gathering in their front yard where there's no masks and it's 20 or 30 people, she will respond. But, but it is, it is trying to educate the, the college community. And, and I think that we have all seen in the, in the news articles. I mean, I think in Florida, there was, there was a thousand kids at, at a party on campus. So unfortunately, kids, hey, I went to OU. I like to have fun when I, I was there. And, and we, we just need to have a, an enforcement arm that Joan is able to, if she can't get these kids to understand the education, if she can't get them to break up their parties, she's got something more in her tool belt to use. And yes, it's probably going to happen more in the downtown area, in the campus area, but it's not. No, she will, she will take complaints from any part of the community. Am I right, Joan?
That was my understanding is that this was not targeted at any one group, but at individuals holding large gatherings over 10, regardless of where they were. So if they don't meet those exceptions, and you know, there are clearly defined exceptions, which are important to note that anybody, you know, could have, could be cited.
But, you know, it seems, it seems like it contradicts itself by when you can go into Rays or the Venice or, or all these places where you got 50, 75, 100 people that are three, four feet apart. And, and, and that's, that's an exception to the rule. But then you've got 25 people on a porch and they get a $500 fine. I mean, it's, something doesn't seem right about it.
Well, the thing would be inside of a restaurant, they do limit parties to groups of 10. And when we do compliance checks, when we see 15 people standing around a table consuming, we will tell the manager, break that, break that party up into two groups, get those people sitting down to consume. And so that they follow the rules. And so that's something. So the, the difference is, is that inside a restaurant, parties are limited to 10 people per table.
So you've got five tables of nine people, which is.
And they're socially distanced in between the tables and they're seated to consume. They're not standing up wandering around to consume like you would at a party.
Jack? Mayor?
Ask the chairman, Robin.
Oh, Jack, yeah, that's what I said.
Go ahead.
Jack?
Yeah?
Uh, you know, John, I hate to, we'll get into a point where we're kind of muddying the water. I, I only, this is not an issue of people's constitutional rights. It's a health and safety issue. And we have to keep it that way. There's a science regarding why Joan and the health department have established the procedures that they have. I'm not going to get into an argument about that. I have to assume that they know what they're doing. The other issue is not going to be the argument about whether or not you've got kids at a house and people in a bar. If the, if the health department is determined that one is more acceptable than the other, not to communicate this disease, then that's what we need to do. This is a issue about passing this virus throughout the community. They have established procedures to do that. I am in total support of what they're attempting to do. We have to get behind this. We are, are watching the leadership of this country come out and salute about an issue which has taken 210,000 lives by the time we start talking here tonight. We have to do something about this. Joan and the health department and the, and the and the law director have come up with a plan to address it. Let's get behind it and move forward. Because we need to do that for the health and safety of the people who live in the city of Kent. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Yeah, I, I, I want to remind you that these are supposed to be in the form of questions, guys. So appreciate your comments, but this is questioning time. So the next person I had was Heidi.
Yeah, so my question is this, how is this going to actually work out on the weekends and the evenings? We have a, we have a house in our community, in our immediate neighborhood.
We have a, we have a house at our community, in our immediate neighborhood that has a party every single weekend so far. I don't necessarily want to call Joan at midnight on Saturday night to come out and personally enforce this, and I think that could be actually pretty difficult to do. You know, and then there's scattered parties. I don't know if there's any particular patterns in some of the other places I see. So it feels like it's harsh to do, just have it on the health department. Is there going to be some backup or fire EMS or, you know, some kind of way that Joan can be supported? Or what's the process for people to, to, uh, to come, to, to call and say, there's a, there's a large gathering in my neighborhood. I'm, you know, concerned about it.
I can speak a little bit on that, I guess. First off, I, I, we would certainly never leave Joan hanging. I mean, if there's a safety issue for Joan or her staff, we're going to be there. That being said, it's my understanding and speaking with Hope that this is a, an ordinance written for civil enforcement. It's not an enforceable offense by the police department. It, it's not a criminal penalty. Part of that has to do, I think, with the way the state's order is written, along with maybe some constitutional issues with enforcing it criminally.
Okay, Mike?
First of all, I think Joan's going to need more people. You know, I, I can't, I, I understand what you're doing, but you can drive down the soccer fields on Fairchild at any given day. There's three hundred, sometimes three hundred and fifty people down there. They're not social distancing. I mean, they're just, they're all cuddled together. How do you do something there? Is that, it's outside and everything, but how do you, how do you?
That's accepted. That's an exception. Sanctioned sporting events are, are accepted from the ordinance.
Intermural sex, or intermural events like that are sanctioned. It's not a high school thing.
If there's issues with them not wearing face masks correctly, or if there's issues where there may be groups on the sidelines that are not participating, those complaints can be turned in and we can, or concerns can be turned in and we can follow up on those with the individual teams and with those coaches.
Well, the only reason I bring that up because I was amazed how many people were there. And, you know, and it's, and it's not all the time, but it's certain times, like, there's three or four games going on at once. And then cars are parked all over the place. My son lives out there. That's how I know this, but it's just crazy. So I, I, that's why I say you need more people.
Just going high school after school.
Gwen?
Yeah, so I have, can you hear me? I have a couple of questions. The first question is, in the fines, does it go specifically to the leaseholder on a house or an apartment? Does it go to the landlord or does it go to part, to participants and people who are gathered at the party? Who gets the fine?
Gwen, it goes to whoever Joan decides to cite. If she decides to cite the person who hosted the party, they get the fine. If she decides to line up the people who were there and give each of them a site, they each have to, have to pay the, the site. If she wants to cite the National Fraternity who owns the property, she can, she can do that as well.
Okay, very good. So she has discretion in that regard. My next question, I don't know if, if Dave would know the answer to this, but it seems to me that this is coming out of a lot of college parties. I've heard a lot of complaints from residents coming specifically from college parties. Do you know if the university has any kind of discipline action against students that are participating in or hosting these college parties?
They are, and, and Joan would know too. She deals with them probably even more than I do. But, yeah, they've taken actions, even a couple specific houses, fraternity, sorority are suspended at this point, cease and desist. They have a hotline complaint system set up so that you can report problem properties or problem students. And honestly, this particular ordinance, they were anxious for you to pass because they felt like, once someone's been cited, even if it's by Joan, they can then process them through their student conduct office. It seemed to be triggered though by some citation, whether it's a criminal through Nick or civil through Joan. Either way, they felt comfortable that if something like that is, has occurred, they can then follow up with that student through the normal student conduct process. So, and, and if I could, this, everybody's raising like really obvious, smart questions about the holes in the law. But I will tell you, it, right from the start, this is an imperfect law in the sense that you can't regulate, like John said there, but you know what? It's another step to try to tighten this thing and keep it contained. We're learning on the fly as a community, the health department, the police, the, the university. And so the systems, we haven't had years or decades to refine the, the system to nail this stuff down. But I feel confident that this is another good step forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to, to be clear on that. And then also, we have more dormitories and students that are quarantining that are showing up positive. And I know that I've heard from business owners too that are concerned as students come downtown, that it, that it's, that it's spreading. So unfortunately, these house parties are very specifically spreading COVID to our downtown. And if we go into, to a, a red or purple state, that's going to do significantly more damage, I think, than, than a few fines. And with any luck, just a threat of fine, it sounds like Dave, you're suggesting would, would help. And the university would then have a record of, of these students. And there could be, potentially be more follow-up if they're really, really resistant to keeping the rest of the city safe. So, thank you.
Further questions? Eric?
Thanks, Jack. So I've had several calls on this and, and, you know, one of the concerns was, is, is, you know, who's, who's the first call in, in, is, and it sounds like it's the health department. So are, are they, more than, I, I have a question. So if the health department is called, and more than likely it's a gathering that's loud and creating some type of disturbance in the neighborhood. So the health department is going to get called to a party where people are drinking. Is the health department prepared to handle those type of individuals?
Garrett, if I can, I, I'll let Joan and Nick specifically if they need to. But from the get-go, we said all along, Nick was very clear. We will absolutely, he has a zero tolerance policy in place right now for nuisance parties, noise complaints. So they are still the first responders for those activities and it's zero tolerance. So while they can't chase them off for having ten or more people, if there's noise, which if there's more than ten people, there's going to be noise. And that's already been in place. So that's step one. Step two is, they, as Nick said, they're still backing Joan up. I mean, they've said very specifically, you're not going to be out there on a limb by yourself. But Joan or Nick, you guys want to give them a little more insight on that?
Well, I, I would hope personally that I would not be going to these events on my own. That if there was a call that came in that maybe dispatch would then get a hold of me, I am already on call twenty-four seven. It's not that I look forward to be awoken at 2:00 AM in the morning, but if that's what has to happen, you know, I'm willing to do it in terms of the safety of the community. So I would hope that, you know, we would be working together on this. And I believe that Chief Shearer already said that he, he would be back up, not himself personally, but the department would be back up for me. So I'll let him explain further how that might work.
Yeah, so I think the best way to explain it is, if it's a loud party that gets called in, it's not necessarily Joan who's going to be the one responding to that. We're going to respond to that, just like we always have. If there's any type of behavior that would necessitate a police response, whether it's an unlawful noise violation or a nuisance party violation, we're going to issue that, that summons and, and it'll go to Kent State that way. Additionally, and maybe Hope can answer this, I, I believe this ordinance, the way it is written with it being a civil infraction, I, I think it's likely Joan could then get the citation, the criminal citation that we would issue to that, to, to any person who gets that citation. I think Joan could probably issue the civil fine on top of that with the burden of proof and a civil case being much less than in a criminal case. If we can meet that criminally, I think she should be able to use that information from us to meet that civilly as well.
That's correct.
So the other question that came up is, is, you know, in these politically charged times with people of different opinions and the, and the, the animosity between groups, how does this not become a weapon to, I'm gonna, I'm going to stop your campaign rally or I'm going to stop your, whatever it may be, because I disagree with it? And, and do we run into a situation where we're trying to legislate human behavior in that regard?
I, I believe campaign rallies would fall under First Amendment and that would be under an exemption for this particular ordinance.
How, how about a religious persecution? You have a Bible study class that gets together Jehovah's Witness on, at your house and your neighbor doesn't like that. So then is that?
Religious gatherings are, are excluded.
Are what?
They're excluded from, from the prohibition. And it doesn't say religious, like, Sunday morning services. It just says religious gatherings. So if someone is having a Bible study at their home, and let's say that Joan is called out and she knocks on the door and the person says, we're having a Bible study. She's going to say thank you very much and she's going to walk away.
I, I think we're just setting ourselves up for, or setting up the potential for, for harassment of individuals. And that becomes a waste of Joan's time and the health department and that, and the police also. When people have, have this sense that they can call under the pretense of not wearing a mask for, let's just say retribution of one, 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 one-way shape or form. I'm, I'm, I, thank you for those answers.
John?
Okay, I've received, I think, five calls in the last two weeks. One from a student and four from parents regarding Roosevelt High School and Stanton Middle School. Now, gathering, non-social distancing, hugging, wrestling, and all the things that you don't do to spread the COVID virus, or that you do do to spread the COVID virus. Now, do, should I tell the parents that called, call the health department, the police, or who gets the ticket? Does the school get the ticket? Do the kids get the ticket? Are they excluded because they're young and stupid, or?
No, schools and university functions and classes are excluded.
So out front of the school is excluded.
If, if, if there's, if there's an issue with gathering, with people congregating in a way that is unsafe, that could be brought to my attention. I would bring it to the superintendent's attention and also the school nurse so that they could monitor that situation. And I believe an email came to me today about that very topic. I forwarded it to Superintendent Joseph and to Stephanie Young, the school nurse. And they will be looking into it and following up on that. The school nurse had shared with me actually just last week that she had been making pointed rounds to look for issues with non-compliance. And on the other hand, issues where compliance could be shown. And she, the whole reason she sent me the letter was to say, hey, kids in the hallway are socially distancing. They're wearing their masks, they're behaving, there, there, it's really stellar behavior. So when I forwarded her that email today, she immediately responded back and said, I am stunned and surprised at that because that is not what I see. I'm at the schools on a daily basis and I don't see that activity. So, but, you know, they are at least aware of it. They've got heightened awareness and they're going to monitor for it now.
Further? No? Okay. So is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Robin?
I, I think Garrett brought up some legitimate concerns back. I can see this becoming somewhat problematic. If somebody can claim a certain type of meeting, either political or religious, just because I may have a wine bottle in my hand when somebody answers the door and I may say I'm having a religious gathering. And then we have to get into trying to prove whether or not it is or isn't, or does Joan walk away or whatever? I can see this becoming somewhat problematic. But I also see the possibility of having the issue of, of this, this COVID which is ravaging our community diminished, and we need this tool in our toolbox. And therefore I'm going to support it.
Heidi?
Yeah, I'm going to support it too. I've, you know, certainly been contacted by a lot of residents that have expressed concerns about the house parties they see and people spilling out onto the yards. And we see the evidence of, of mass gatherings af, the day after as well. But, you know, I want to speak to, I had a gathering with approximately twenty people about six weeks ago. That was my wedding. But what we did was we had people wear masks until they were seated. And we sat them this in a distanced way unless they were members of a household. And then when we, at the reception, we did the same thing until people were seated. You know, they, they were, they were masked. And so it can be done in a respectful way. If you need to have a little bit more than ten for some special occasion, you have to really the, the, the social distancing aspects of it and the masking. So I support this as a tool, but I do need to remind everyone that we're going to use discretion as we, as we talked about in the enforcement of it. So that people that are acting responsibly are not necessarily, you know, fined. And people that are acting irresponsibly are, then have consequences.
Thank you, Heidi. Gwen?
Yeah, I just, I would just like to say that I, I think Joan's judgment so far in handling this pandemic is sound and reasonable. I think if Joan comes across a, a, a situation like a large gathering with alcohol in a house or in a front lawn where people aren't maintaining social distance, I think the facts support that this is, that's the type of event that spreads COVID and that can impact our, our community outside of just that party. It can impact other residents, our downtown businesses, the university and, and, you know, our, our public school system and a large number of other things. So in this case, although, although imperfect, I think it warrants action on our part to protect the greater good in this pandemic. Unfortunately, no, it's not perfect, but I think Jo, Joan's judgment is good. And then looking over the ordinance too, there is an appeals process. If somebody has a problem with the fine that was levied against them, it looks like we have a very clearly defined way that you can represent yourself and say that you, that you, perhaps you don't deserve it. And then likewise, the fact that the university can then look at this information, if there are repeat offenders, if there are people that insist on having these types of parties that have been proven to spread it, that the university can then step in and kind of have this on the record and then take action. I think it helps protect the community at, at large. So, so I, I, I support it. And it's unfortunate that, that we're in a position that we have to do this. But we tried education for a very long time and Joan has been diligent i, in that regard. And I have a feeling that she's spoken to a lot of these people repeatedly, so I'm going to vote for it.
Garrett?
I, I respect what Joan's had to say and how, and what she's done and echo Gwen's sentiments in that regard. But at the same time, you know, I, I think that the, that when we're going to get called, it's going to be called on the noise ordinance because there's that many people and you just open up a can of worms by having this ability to call the health department on a gathering of ten or more people. I, I think, I am going to vote no again on the motion.
John?
Yeah, I, I still think it's a targeting issue and probably for just Yeah, I, I still think it's a targeting issue and probably for just cause. I mean, no drunken party is gonna help the cause, that's for sure. But there, there are so many exclusions to this and, and you face it, every place you go, you're vulnerable. I, I was terrified to have to get on an airplane and fly down here the other day. And you know, the, the only answer to this problem is, is self-discipline. It's obvious by, by the graphs that show that masking all over the country and all over the world has not really made a big dent in the growth of, of the COVID-19. I, I think, I don't know if that's a good or bad graphs, but I looked at a lot of them because I believe in masks. I think they help people, but I, I do think that we can legislate stupidity. And I, I'm gonna vote no for it. You, you know how I feel.
Roger?
Well, well first, let me respond to John. John, all those graphs showed where, where masks were mandated. It doesn't show compliance. I'd like to know what the compliance numbers are. Because like you said, I'm like you, you know, I, I, I wear my mask everywhere I go when I'm gonna be in a crowd or in the store. But I'm gonna tell you, a lot of times I'm the only one that has a mask on. So I'd like to hear what the compliance is. I think when we make these mandates and there's not, and then we don't enforce the mandates, then it is all voluntary. And I think we have been, and I think I've been, I remember when I made the motion for the mask mandate in Kent. I said that, you know, let's not look at enforcement right yet, let's look at how our community responds. And certainly I think the, the general community has responded fairly well. And I think the same thing can be said with the, with the governor's policies on, on, you know, groups of 10. And I know that, as Heidi said, we had a baby shower for my son and we actually had to have two and a half showers because we only would allow eight people at each one. And we were bringing, you know, and that's what you do. And that's what we do. And you can't legislate, I would agree, you cannot legislate common sense to people. Especially when, as Garrett said, there are a lot of people who still don't believe this is a big deal. That they still discount the whole COVID thing. So I struggle with this because I, I struggle with the idea of, of having to go into homes and say, hey, look, you've got way too many people and you've got a party going on. But I think realistically, realistically, we might as well throw out all, all these mandates out the door if we're not gonna have some kind of enforcement arm on it to, if nothing else, to help the university. Because the university is trying their best to try to help the community. They're doing a lot of work. I know that they, you know, I've sat through enough presentations by members of the university of what they're trying to do to help the community, to help not, the neighborhoods and to help our business community. So if this is gonna help the university a little bit in terms of giving them a little extra, then yeah, I, I can support it. But I am struggling with it. I'm just like both Garrett and John. I struggle with the whole idea of, you know, going in and breaking up parties. I, if they're noisy and they're rowdy, I think they should be broken up. But if, if it's just on a COVID thing, I, I struggle with that a little bit, but I'm gonna support it because I think it, it is for the general good for both the university and our community.
Right. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So who?
Two noes, John.
Two noes, okay.
John and Garrett.
Okay. Passes.
Thought it had to pass by 75%.
Doesn't.
We need six votes.
Can't hear you.
Who's, who was talking?
To me?
The, the vote, there were two no votes. Does this pass or not?
And there's nine council members.
We have six yeses, so passes.
This, this is just the vote to bring it out for a vote. So it doesn't, it passed by a simple majority.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you, Hope.
Tracy.
Okay, that's it.
All right, we're gonna land this committee, Mr. Forrester.
Yes, committee time presented a request to vacate Adrian Avenue. I'll turn it over to the administration.
You may recall that there was a request, I don't know, maybe six months ago now, maybe longer, time goes fast, where a resident was trying to buy some land off the backside of Adrian that he wanted to build a house behind some existing houses. And the deal was, he was trying to seek the city's permission to buy sort of the right of way that we had reserved for a potential future road that I understand is called Whitewood Drive. Well, that deal didn't happen. But since that time, the two neighbors, adjoining neighbors have approached and been working with Hope to find out if they could acquire, get ownership of that unused paper street, that Whitewood Drive that we have no plans to ever proceed with. So Hope's here to just explain that to you, that process and present their request.
And, and because there's only two parcels involved, both of those owners have signed a petition requesting that we vacate that paper street. If council allows that, then basically what would happen to that property is from the middle of the paper street, each, each person would gain ownership of that property. And we would, we would replant their property. We would reserve all of our easements that we need through that area and then it would be forever theirs. And I understand from Bridges Department that there is, there is no need for this property. We do not intend to have Whitewood Drive go across the property and into Forest Lakes at all.
Questions? Has that it, Hope?
Yes.
You who are, go ahead.
Hope, is it not required to vacate that, that the, that either the prospective purchasers or someone advertises that in the paper for a number of days?
No. No, they need to, they, they just need to present a, a petition to us with, if it was a larger road, the petition would have to be signed for a period with 60% of the property owners, but we've got 100% here. You, you know what, John, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't presume to be perfect. I'll take a look at that, but no, I don't think that's the case.
Because a couple of properties that I vaca, I vacated, I did basically the same thing. I owned the property on all sides, but I had, but I had to, it seems to me I had to publish something publicly for any objections for a period of time. I can't remember the exact details. It's just been a long time ago.
And you know what, John, it could be because the city has its own right to vacate a street. But then the property owners have their right to ask for it. So it may, I'll take a look. It may be a difference between who, who, who initiates the process.
Yeah, this was a township right of way that I dealt with.
Okay. Well, I, you know what, I'll take a look at that to make sure we're A-OK.
And I'm all, I'm all, I'm all pleased that both people are getting satisfied.
Yeah, they like this. And thank you, John. I'll take a look at that.
Further questions, Mr. Sedoti?
Uh, yes, Hope, when you talk about easements, are we talking about like water and sewer easements that will still hold if we need to, to do some things there? Because you mentioned easements and I was just.
Yes, yes, they would be utility easements. And, and I think from trying to remember back six months ago when we were talking to Mr. Musselman, I think there were a couple of easements, sewer sanitary through there. But we'll make sure that we preserve anything that we need so that if, if there's any future necessity for the city to do any utility work over there, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Further from council? Anybody from the audience like to speak on this motion? Back to council?
Move to approve with emergency if you need it.
Second.
Moved to seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no. Motion passes. I think that's it for the land use.
Finance committee, Mr. Delio.
Hey, we're gonna do the OPWC project applications with Mr. Bowling. There you go, Jim.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is our annual opportunity to look for state funding for infrastructure. It was delayed a little bit this year due to everything going on in 2020. But it's still moving forward and we're recommending two projects to apply for. One is at the water reclamation facility, the repairing, rehabilitating the final clarifiers. This would be phase one. There's four clarifiers at the plant. They were all built in 1964, so they're over 50 years old. And they, like any steel mechanical equipment, need to be replaced. So these projects would basically keep all the concrete for the 60-foot tanks and then replace all the steel and mechanical equipment. We would be requesting $650,000 in grants and $150,000 in no interest loan for this. And this would be basically the first of many projects at the water reclamation facility that need to be taken care of as the age, as the plant ages here on us. So the second project's more straightforward like we're used to seeing. It's a water main replacement at Kaiga Majors in Stenaf North of Child and East of Major's Lane. It's about a half a mile of water main. It's the worst location in the city where we get water main breaks. We've actually had three water main breaks this year along, on this line. And the other problem that we'd be solving is there is lack of fire flow if there, in case there's a fire because there's lines in the, the water system's not gridded like the rest of the town. So this project would replace the old lines that are failing, upsize the lines, add a gridded network to it to get fire flow for that neighborhood. So this one will request 240,000 in grant and 150,000 in loan. So just looking for your approval to submit for these two projects.
Questions from council? Seeing none? Anybody in the audience? Nobody? Back to council. Okay, I don't know who said what, but I think Amy, you got that? Okay.
I think Heidi made the motion.
Okay.
Second, let's go.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you all.
Electrical vehicle charging station. This bridge.
Hello, yes, the city became aware in a, of a grant literally a week before it was due. This grant was technically submitted on September 30th. We did not receive the information on the request for applications until a week before it was due. All of the heavy lifting credit goes to Kathy Petzko, who basically set aside all of her CDBG tasks for a good four days to get this grant together and out. The money for this is coming from the Ohio EPA. If many of you may remember the Volkswagen emissions cheating scandal, there was a class action settlement that assigned $3 billion to all the states here in the US. And Ohio got 73, 75.3 million of that. Of that amount that's coming to the state over a 10-year period, they've committed about 11 million of that 75 million to charging stations and other sustainable energy infrastructure to support alternative energy vehicles. So this grant itself is a request for 30,000, which was, was the, the maximum. We've requested basically 15,000 for two dual-port units, which will allow for electric charging stations at the new administration building. It would be four spots. The match was met by the capital investment for the major project that would be going in, and that's a little over 10,000. We feel pretty confident, even though Kathy had to scramble and get this done in such a short time because they identified key counties and locations they wanted. And one of those counties was portage and they also wanted it to be at a government facility. So we had those two checkboxes right off, out of the gate. So retroactively, I'm asking for permission to have the grant submitted. We assumed that would be okay and we're hopeful we'll hear by the end of the year.
Questions? John?
These charging stations, are, are they gonna be something that anybody can plug in for free or is there a toll? And then when you plug into them, how long do they take to charge your car?
Actually, there's two rounds of this grant. This first one, these are fast charging ports, so a car can be charged in a couple hours. The concept that Kathy presented in our grant application was that people can park, there would be no fee. They could then go over and have lunch or do something in downtown and come back and pick up their vehicle. It's, it, it basically, it would be, the car would be very depleted to need the whole two-hour charging. There's a slower charging, but those are gonna, that grant is gonna be released in the new year in 2021 and that's for along highways. The one thing about this too is the state has already gone through and identified a preferred vendors list. So we don't even actually need to bid it out for those units. We were able to identify and Kathy made contact with two of the vendors on there, one of which who provided a lot of the technical information we needed. And as long as we use one of those vendors, we can just use this money to, to pay for that purchase and not even have to bid out for these units. So in other words, the cost that's anticipated and estimated to be awarded by the Ohio EPA will cover the cost of those units. It's not something where we're kind of guessing on what they're gonna run. We actually know what they will cost, including any ancillary connections.
Questions?
I know GM is coming out with a whole new line of, of component cars that will travel 400 miles on a charge. So maybe they can stop in Kent and get a boost.
Roger, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, Bridget, you know, there have been some concerns about our new city hall and parking. Are we gonna have it signed in a certain way that, you know, because that's gonna take two parking spots, I would assume. And is there gonna be a way of making sure that people know that they're available when we do have large city council meetings?
Yes, they will be signed. And the parking that has been provided, as I believe Melanie has shown on the last rendering, there is ample parking in the lot for employees, the public, as well as accommodating the, these parked positions. You can use these positions without being charged, but there will be, there's criteria for the signage that was actually referenced in the grant. So those details, if we get it, will be specified by the Ohio EPA with regards to, they have to be made available X amount of hours per many, so many days per week. We do not anticipate an issue with them being available though during the daytime.
Okay. Thank you.
Heidi?
Yeah. So can these charging stations be hooked up to the solar panels on the roof of the city administration building? Because my friends do that with their solar panels. They charge their electric car.
Actually, these ones will be primarily, it looks like we're locating them by where the generators are going to be. So those details will be sorted out by the engineers working on the project. But if the solar panels are installed and they cover a certain portion, it may be, I think it'd be too early to tell. I do think it'll probably be just tapped into the irregular power that is in close proximity to where these spaces will be located.
John, you have a question?
Yeah, the one, the one question is, who pays the electric bill? And a little addendum to Heidi's question is, they don't have enough guts out of that few panels to run a charger.
I, I think there, I do not believe, based on the way the grant is written, that we can charge for the use. That it was one of the things that they're trying to do is promote basically the reduction of emissions and have government entities that are eligible to get this, to provide that service to the public. So this grant round was made available basically to local governments primarily. I do not believe that charging a fee for them. I do not believe that charging a fee for them, or if there is a fee that would need to be charged, it would be de minimis.
Yeah, because they take load.
Robin, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, uh, anybody else from council? Nobody from the audience? Uh, back to council?
Move to authorize.
Okay, that was John and Heidi.
With emergency?
With the.
Yes, with, with emergency, retroactive.
Okay. Motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
City property auction and disposal, uh, oh, Melanie. Had to look the right square.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, yes, what you have before you is our annual request for disposal of items owned by the city. Uh, you should have before you the list of items. If you'll note, we have six vehicles that we've been able to take out of inventory. Most of them are, um, over, uh, ten to fifteen, some are well beyond that in their age. One of those vehicles, I'll point out, because we're always looking at energy efficiency and energy emissions. Um, and my hats go off to Bridget and the economic development department, because one of those vehicles is that nineteen ninety-eight Ford, uh, F-150 pickup, which was replaced by a Jeep, um, that was a, a little more fuel efficient. It has where the engine turns off when it comes to a stop and those kinds of things. So, um, these are a part, again, it's a removal of equipment that has been either replaced or will be replaced, um, this coming year with equipment. Um, we have everything from the vehicles to large equipment to miscellaneous equipment. You'll note, we have quite a bit from the health department. They did, and they were successful in their move from their building over to Parra. So a lot of this, um, uh, furniture that you'll see was well beyond its use. So my hat's off again to Joan and her department for making the most out of all of the equipment that they had. Um, so I am before you to ask approval for these. I would like to note that down at the bottom, um, we're trying to get the most out of all of it. So you'll see an area where stuff is just beyond the ability for it to sell, but we do feel we can scrap it out for money. But then we do have a list of about seven different types of items that, um, are either well beyond their life, broken, or have no value to them that we do need to dispose of without return.
Questions? Seeing none, uh, there's no audience, uh, back to council?
Move to authorize.
Do you need an emergency with this?
Uh, yes, please.
With emergency.
Second. Here we got the motion seconded, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody? Alrighty.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty. Nope, thank you, welcome. Twenty, twenty twenty budget.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I just wanted to see if, uh, I would like to request council to approve the amended appropriations I submitted in a memo dated September twenty ninth to the city manager and to see if you had any questions.
Questions? Seeing none? Back to council?
Move to approve with emergency.
Automatic.
Second.
Second, moved to seconding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, didn't you?
Okay, uh, this, uh, at this time, we're done with the council committee meeting. We're gonna go into a special council meeting. Uh, with, with Amy, please call the roll. And Amy? Amy, unmute yourself.
It looks like she might be lost.
She's frozen.
Oh, she's frozen. Who's, who's, who's her second in?
Let me call her.
We can't take roll by ourselves.
Say her name and then say here.
Help us.
Hey, Gwen, she's not using your computer, is she?
Yeah, yeah.
She could be.
There, but not there is what I can't.
She's floating around.
For planning commission, we sometimes do that where they self-roll call if for some reason, you know, we, you know, they, they get started that way. So maybe you can.
Right. She is froze. She's gonna leave the meeting and try and rejoin us.
Well, we're, you know, we're on YouTube, so really we could self, uh, roll call and then she could go back and.
Self-destruct, Roger? Let's give her a minute. If not, I'll call the roll.
Yeah.
Is that permissible, Hope? I lost Hope too.
Hope, Hope texted me about five minutes ago, said, is it okay? I need to step out. And I said, sure, because we've never needed her. Now the one time we need her.
Let's give, let's give Amy a couple of minutes. If not, I'll do the roll.
Well, none of us have disappeared, but.
Hey, Heidi?
Yeah.
That new building, the Unitarian Church is building, is that a community center?
Well, to some degree, it's, it's a, it's the social hall for the, for the church. It could be rented out for, you know, wedding receptions and things like that.
I just wondered, it seems to be a pretty big construction job. Is that being built under the LEED qualification by any chance?
Under the what qualifications?
LEED qualifications.
Oh, LEED, LEED. Well, yeah, to some degree, yes. I mean, you know, everybody has to cut costs and stuff, but it's gonna be solar panel ready and things like that, you know, um, we've had quite a lot of setbacks.
We lost Amy.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I still think we're losing Amy. She just says, I'm still froze. I'm gonna call the roll. Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Mr. Delion?
Here.
Mr. Amorine?
Here.
Ms. Gwen?
Here.
Mr. Ferrera?
Here.
And Ms. Schaefer?
Schaefer Bish, here.
I'm sorry. And, uh, Tracy asked to be excused. Uh, do I have a motion?
Mr. Robin?
Oh, I'm sorry, Robin. I don't see your picture. Are you with us, Robin? All right.
Here.
All right.
And I excuse, uh, move to excuse Tracy.
Tracy Wallack? Second, second by Jack. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side. All right, I need a motion to approve draft number twenty twenty ninety-six.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Heidi made the motion and, uh, Mike seconded. I gotta write this down for Amy.
We're gonna have somebody read it?
Well, wait, we're gonna make the motion.
Who did?
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put them order. Are we, are we, we need to read the draft?
Yeah, we need to read it.
We're just authorizing the draft.
Can we still hear it? I don't know what the draft is.
We just talked about it. Amy, are you with us?
No, no, she was. She's frozen again.
Oh, no, she's moving.
She is.
Moving.
He's coming.
It's not so fun getting locked out of a meeting, is it, Amy?
She's, she's moving.
There she goes.
You're muted, Amy. Are you with us?
No.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Why don't you run up here?
Why don't you run?
Bring it, bring the draft of the, of the ordinance that we need you to read.
In front of you, Heidi.
Where is it in front of us? There I am.
It was in the special console packet that we got.
Mass gatherings.
This? The text of it.
Get it out of committee, uh, Garrett. All we did was take it out of committee.
Text?
Amy, we're gonna go soon.
I don't see the text of it.
Yeah, it was on the.
Put it in your packet, Heidi.
I have my packet right here. Um.
We just talked about it for twenty minutes.
I know what it, I know what it is, but I don't see the actual text of the ordinance.
It's a sign.
I have it. Oh, wait.
I have it right here.
In ordinance enacting the prohibition of mass gatherings of more than ten non-household members within the city of Kent, Ohio, in order to limit the spread of COVID nineteen, allowing for civil penalties and declaring an emergency.
Move.
The law is here. All right, we got a motion to authorize. They want to read the, before we, which doesn't seem right, but we made a motion.
Okay.
To authorize it.
Um, draft number twenty twenty dash ninety-seven.
Yes.
In ordinance enacting the prohibition of mass gatherings of more than ten non-household members within the city of Kent, Ohio. Sorry, I'm out of breath. In order to limit the spread of COVID nineteen, allowing for civil penalties and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
No, no, back up. You never authorized it yet.
Oh.
If you remember, Heidi, I asked you, you need a motion to authorize it. Mr. Sedoti seconded. We need the motion to authorize it.
Okay, so this is the point where we all say aye or nay?
Well, no, you butted in and wanted to hear the ordinance. All right, the motion down the floor is authorize this ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side.
No.
Right. Now, we're back to ground two.
The legislation, I'll reread.
Yes, please.
Okay, we're in number three, the legislation. Draft number twenty twenty dash ninety-seven, in ordinance enacting prohibition of mass gatherings of more than ten non-household members within the city of Kent, Ohio, in order to limit the spread of COVID nineteen, allowing for civil penalties and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
For suspension.
Second.
Heidi and, are you getting?
Yeah.
All right, call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amorine?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
No.
Mr. Delion?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
All right, I didn't see that. Who made the motion?
Heidi.
Heidi, who seconded it?
Roger.
Roger. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Hearing none, please call. John, do you have something to say?
Already said.
Okay, Mr. Amorine?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
No.
Mr. Delion?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
No.
Ms. Heidi Schaefer Bish?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, we have one, two, six voting yes and two voting no. So the passes.
Don't you go by the total council?
No.
No.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash ninety-seven has passed.
Okay. We're gonna adjourn. We're gonna go into executive session now. Uh, Jack, will you read the?
Yes. Yep. Uh, we need an execu- executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, paragraph one twenty-one point two-two, section Z, item one, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
Hey, Roger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Mr. Delion?
Yes.
Mr. Amorine?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
All right, I will give five minutes for all the non-participants to leave.